Seven oh two, so we'll call the meeting to order. I'm Jenny Reagan, I'm sitting in his chair today. Did anybody, everybody read the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Somebody to approve them?
I'll approve.
Kathy, second? Hi Kevin. We had a meeting on Tuesday morning.
What?
Two o'clock.
Oh, every, oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
People are good as hell. Everybody approved them, thank you.
Bye.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
We don't get a dug eye?
Dug eye.
Only one per night.
We had a meeting on Tuesday morning, we only had one item on the agenda. And that was Hagerty's, sorry, Hadley's. What's the word for the use?
Excessory.
Excessory use building, and so we discussed that. But nobody had to approve that, right?
No.
Alright, and then...
And there's nothing on for the next one yet.
Okay. And we don't have any plans for the next one, which is two Tuesdays from now. Because we're coming up on holiday, and then can we start with our agenda today? Verizon? Alrighty.
Thank you for having me back, John Bussett with Naperville Consulting here for Verizon at sixty-three sixty Thompson Road. Last time we were here, we had proposed a six-foot chain link fence with barbed wire popping. The board had some exceptions to that, kind of came to the compromise of potentially proposing an eight-foot chain link fence instead. So, our new plan has that, largely it's unchanged. We had removed about nine parking spots from what is existing. But to make that up, in our new plan, we've proposed an additional sixteen parking spaces on the east side of the site to make that back up. We'll have new concrete curbing to go with these two fifteen-foot actuated access gates. Everything will be tied in there, and at the last meeting, the topic of the existing fence had come up and how old that was, whether or not it had gone through any approvals. We went back through historical photography, we couldn't reliably see anything on the site prior to two thousand. Not entirely certain how long it's been there. My colleague Neil Zinsmeyer met Eric out in the field to talk about the existing fence. And the barbed wire was actually in pretty poor condition, so I think we came to the conclusion that the best option to move forward is to remove the existing barbed wire from the chain link fence that's there right now. And we've added that onto sheet C two down here on detailed floor.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have reviewed this before.
Have, have the comments, questions on the queue, queuing lines at the gates, has that been addressed?
For the tractor trailer links that we talked about, so it was long enough to be stopped at the gate?
So I don't think we have any tractor trailers coming in here, we do have spacing for a fire truck to be able to park without blocking anything.
Could you show us the rest of the...
And for when you're thinking, what is charter stuff?
Oh, it was a different one Doug.
Is that a different project?
Yeah, charter.
I think they had gone right after us at the last meeting.
Yeah, we had two.
Till we were in.
John, you said concrete curbing?
Uh, granite, if I did say concrete, that was, yeah, I did his granite tag meal, I apologize, that's a good gax.
The plans do say granite.
Yeah.
Forgive me, but were you proposing any kind of signs for how should we exit?
No, the only things that'll go in are the fifteen-foot fences or the gates, the key card access, the pads, and the new curbing, otherwise it's just the new three hundred seventy feet of fence.
Alrighty, we have a motion, Verizon Fence Thompson Road. Motion to approve this site plan entitled Verizon Fence Improvements dated eight twenty-six twenty-five, last revised on November fourteenth, with the following findings and conditions. This approval is only an approval in connection with the fence modifications shown on the site plan approved herein. All prior approvals in connection with the site are in full force and effect and unmodified. This board has reviewed the administrative review of the OCPB dated ten eight twenty-five with respects to this project wherein the OCPB took no position. This board has reviewed the SEAF and applicant dated June twenty-six twenty twenty-five and finding no significant adverse environmental impact from the project grant, from the project grants a negative seeker declaration for this unlisted action. This approval is made with further conditions that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant and requires that all of the work shown to be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the planning board documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town of Dewitt Code Section one nine two dash one two two. Can I have somebody? Kevin, second? Bill? Everyone's vote, anybody? Doug raised his hand.
Doug eye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, thanks very much.
Wegmans multi-tenant sign package?
Hi.
Hi.
Caitlin Piekowski with the Site Development Group at Wegmans. Here to present on the multi-tenant sign package. Our newest tenant who will be occupying D in this area that we have shown here was submitting their sign plan and was told that they needed to supply a multi-tenant sign plan that we weren't aware of and all the existing sign which has been building approved and things like that, so this is for future tenants that we will potentially have in the plaza at Wegmans. So, everything on this plan for the sign band complies with the zoning code for the special use business. And the new tenant also complies within that sign band. So, we're hoping to get this approved so they can open at the end of the month like we'd like to.
So there were some restrictions on colors that you guys had, did you clarify that in here of what they were doing for colors?
So, they have, well, in their building permit, they do have the two blue colors, sorry. Blue, it's very blue. I think we're, were we talking about just this sign or new sign or the whole multi-tenant?
The multi-tenant.
It should be the whole multi-tenant, so then they could go in for their building permit.
Oh, no, no, right, I think Jenny was asking you, what are the colors in the multi-tenant signs?
That's white or red.
Oh, 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 yes, red is the, sorry, I apologize, yes, so red.
The multi-tenant, the signs are all red or the signs are all white?
The signs are all what they used to be, red.
Either white or red on the...
Correct, yeah.
I thought you were asking about the lumos, but that's not really...
Yeah, that's where I was looking for, so yeah, all the signs are white.
Yeah, so all signs are white, and then did we, did we... Yeah, so that's what Doug, Doug and I think were both the ones asking, like, how would it look if like everybody had a white sign and then somebody, there's red, like, is there any limitation or any kind of coordination that if everybody else is doing white that you guys would stick to?
We would suggest that the new tenant would use white as well, yes, so that it's all can, you know, uniform.
So what was blue?
The sign, the lumos sign is for during the day, not but at night, white. So their background is white and then the...
Okay.
The note on there doesn't really clarify that the illumination is white or red, it just says sign letters, did either white or red?
Correct.
I just don't want lumos to have an issue.
Correct, right, so when they do do their final, whatever gets approved, we will coordinate with them to make sure that they have...
And so...
But I don't think, I mean, you don't hear if it would have more colors.
It really upends the applicant to restrict colors to whatever extent they would like to.
Right.
It's not really a requirement of ours to restrict it. We kind of suggest for, you know...
Have a limitation of colors though.
But that was in the Wegmans' brief, I think.
Yeah, what they brought to the table. Or...
Yeah, I thought they were going to kind of give us a document that showed what they had in their contract and then compare it to ours to show like agreed with ours, agreed with ours, you know, we'll let them know that ours is more restrictive or theirs is more restrictive, but we didn't get asked, sorry, it's okay.
I guess to clarify, can the, can the letters during shady, any color?
The signs, I think.
The colors of the signs, like the actual letters.
Doesn't your lease agreement say white or?
We, so that's for lighting at night, but during the day, I believe I would have to look back at the thing, but we have like a three-color limit, so no more than three colors of their choosing, so it matches whatever their logo is, we're not going to restrict them on what their logo is.
I think we should put that in there to clarify, I'm sure. We can have a condition. I think just, I mean, not, not to hold up this approval, but I understand that is, is that the actual colored letters are limited
to... I believe it's three, three colors, but it's to any three colors that their logo is, yeah.
For any three colors.
So that it complies with their logo.
Tenor choice.
Yeah, because we have a limit in our code, I thought, of a number of colors.
We do.
Again, thinking of a gas station.
There is somewhere in our code where it limits the non-colors.
Yeah. And so I just look at my...
But I can't recall if it's in the design guide.
Isn't it just on the canopy though, like a station?
Canopy does have restrictions, it actually says one, or like an architecturally compatible.
Well, I think in this multi-tenant sign plan that, that this board can, can be, you know, be reasonable about it, so if Wegmans is saying the actual letters of the logo signs of each tenant are limited to three colors of tenant choice. Right? And then, is it clear on there, on that note about the illumination being at night?
Yeah, I think we would want to update the red note on here, so we can, like a condition on the approval. If you guys can update the language accordingly and then we can...
I won't say well.
Approve that as a legal change.
That we have.
Yeah.
What, just to clarify, what does, what do you really mean by saying that the, that the letters can be three colors? But the logo could be, sorry, say that again?
Yeah, whatever their logo is, it can be the colors that their company chooses and then
Right.
like, whatever it's lit up at night, right?
But we don't allow, well, I, I...
But then there's the question of illumination, right? So if it's a, if it's a backlit, blue color letter, it's going to be a blue, it's going to be a blue color at nighttime, unless I miss something.
Correct.
Yeah.
If it's a backlit, aren't they usually aluminum and then it would, you know?
Either.
So, yeah, I guess, is it plastic with the light behind it, the shining white and everything is...
It's a raceway sign essentially, so it's one big box internally.
So the light shines through the front of the letters, not, not back, like some of the other ones.
Some of their color there during daytime will be their color at night, because you're just going to put the light on.
We can clarify though, on the plans, what it will end up being. Just because this is more for the multi-tenant, not necessarily the...
Right, I don't want to sidetrack onto the...
Because lumos will come in with their sign permit.
And that builders have to meet.
Any other questions? Okay, for the Wegmans multi-tenant sign package, the motion to approve the multi-tenant sign plan dated eleven ten twenty twenty-five with the following findings and conditions. This matter is exempted from the OCPB. This board has reviewed the SEAF of the applicant, yeah, of the applicant dated November sixth twenty twenty-five and finds no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative seeker declaration for this unlisted action. The approval is made with the condition and understanding that the multi-tenant sign package approved herein is only in connection with the smaller tenant building at six eight one one East Genesee Street, which is part of the Wegmans Plaza. A further condition is that the sign plan specification set forth in this multi-tenant sign package shall, shall be applicable to any new tenant signs commencing with the date of this approval. Upon further tenant turnover requiring new tenant signage, all provisions of the multi-tenant sign package should, shall be applicable. Provided all provisions of the multi-tenant sign package are complied with, further approvals for signage on the building shall only require an administrative sign permit from the Department of Planning and Zoning. Additional conditions to add the following notes on the plan, if the actual letters of the sign can of the sign
Of each tenant.
Of each tenant are to be limited to any three colors of the tenant's choice. This approval is made with further conditions that this approval is only for the multi-tenant sign package approved herein as have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant and requires that all work shown to be completed by the applicant in order to, in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the multi-tenant sign package are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town of Dewitt Code Section one nine two one two two. May I have a motion to approve? Kathy's? Second?
I'll second.
Does all in favor?
Yes.
And the motion moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is a zone change for six eight six four East Genesee.
Oh, oh, sorry. So, the applicant, through his attorney, did request an adjournment of the matter, and after discussion with the chair, it was determined and the applicant agreed that they would withdraw this request without prejudice. They'll bring it up again when they're ready, apparently they, the applicant has hired a designer to show some plan that they think is applicable to this request.
Alright, and so item number four, which is not me, I guess, is that irritation that you're... For somebody else that was...
I do think that this property is an irritation.
And this is at sixty-two hundred Thompson Road?
Yes.
And your name again?
My name is Jeff Boat. I'm the owner of Irrigation Guys. We are an irrigation company, lawn sprinklers, martial residential, a little bit of light industrial, not building sprinklers, very different from that, actual lawn and landscape sprinklers. This property has a bit of history to it, what we're looking for is getting the change of use from our sales and service to landscaping. It is in the business district. I think it's subsection P is Parter Cultured Landscape and Garden Center, which is what our, our core primary business is. So we would use this property to basically be our staging point to conduct operations. General usage would be employees showing up in the morning, loading up trucks and equipment, going out to customers' properties, conducting work. Coming back, we would use the inside of the building for our material storage. There's also an existing shed behind it, we would use that for additional storage for stuff that doesn't need to be climate controlled. We're proposing to put in some wooden fencing with swing gates that would provide some, like shield length, or I don't think you guys have different for that, but, um, screening, thank you. Provide screening, give us a spot that's a little bit more secure for our trucks. We have a dingo, which is a walk behind skid steer, got some various attachments and stuff. They're not going to jump out and bite anybody, but if they're behind a fence, nobody can accidentally trip on them if they're wandering through the parking lot. Um, the only thing that is I think a little bit contentious against your recommendations in the planning guidance is the setbacks. So in twenty seventeen, this property had eminent domain pulled on it. Fifteen feet of the property was taken for a sidewalk and water main repair. Because of that, the right of way is quite a bit further back from the road than you would anticipate. If we go with the recommended twenty feet of landscaping buffer from the property line that only leaves twenty-five feet from the front of the building to the landscaping. That's not enough room to be able to back a truck with a trailer into the garage or maneuver, it makes it, it makes the lot very, very tighty. And as Thompson Road has grown, as the sidewalk grew, as eminent domain took a piece of that to take care of the water main, the back of the property didn't grow at all. So, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit of leeway there to where we still have twenty feet of landscape buffer from the edge of the sidewalk, in this particular case, the sidewalk is right on the its road granite curb sidewalk. From the edge of that sidewalk back, we would have twenty feet of landscape buffer, you know, green space.
So I just want to clarify, he said setback?
But you just mean landscape buffer?
Yes.
So that they, the front yard setback is conform, conforming, the rear yard setback is pre-existing, non-conforming. So I don't want, I don't want, just the landscape buffer.
Are you adding any additional pavement or what's already there?
So...
Is that reducing any green space in the front?
Correct, currently there's like five feet of green space, maybe three feet, and it's, this property is in horrible, horrible shape.
Are these your trailers and stuff in the Google Maps? And a boat on the side of the building?
You're not...
No, I, I don't, I don't occupy the building, I have a proposal into purchase the building.
I was going to say they have like the little speck of grass and they parked like every piece of stuff that they had on the grass.
No, we, we have no involvement in this.
Yeah.
But I want to buy it, but I don't want to buy it if you guys are going to tell me that I can't do what I want to do with it, right? So, it's, we, Eric and I have talked, it's kind of a weird backwards thing of trying to get approval because I've got money now into this plan, into the application, for something that I don't own yet, but...
Do you actually have a contract?
To purchase, we do not, so we have a letter of intent, which means that we're exclusively negotiating until the end of this month, at which point we'll do a group purchase agreement contingent on approval.
Help this board?
Correct.
How do, how does everyone feel about the trailers and stuff parked at the side of the building?
They're behind the screen.
So, those, this equipment is fully road ready, ready, these two trailers are registered, have license plates. These in the state of New York don't need license plates, but they're on wheels, they, they go out, they drive, they have lights, they conform to all road laws and, and are permanent storage fixtures.
So how many total vehicles are there?
Currently, three trucks, two, three trailers and two air compressors.
And a dingo.
So do you own those vehicles or are you purchasing them with the property?
No, I, I own the vehicles currently.
Okay.
And how many employees would you have on a day-to-day or and/or customers coming to the site? You know, particularly with, with the need to access behind the swing gates that are right in front of the parking spots.
Yeah, so currently we have two employees. This summer we have four employees, we are looking to grow, but we're not going to be a bright view size entity in, in this space or for the next two nails out many years.
The people that you employ, do they come and park and take off at one of your trucks or do they, how do they?
Mostly one of them does have take-home privileges, so he takes, he does keep the truck with him.
How many parking spaces do you have to him?
I think there's eight, but I also forget how you count the handicaps. So there's four here. Yeah, four here, three regular and the handicap, and then these, if we want to count them as parking spaces, or no?
You can if you have something stored there.
About the septic system?
There's a septic system, unfortunately, that's, that's the extent that I, that who knows.
Are there two vents?
Yeah, so there, there's a vent here and there's a vent here. I believe that this is the septic vent and this is an abandoned vent that used, this used to be hooked up to county sewer. And then there were issues with the owner before the current owner. I'm fuzzy on the details there, I guess he disconnected the water main also.
He was a weird guy.
He had like water tanks.
Just going to say, before you buy it, maybe you should have a septic guy go in there too.
Yeah, probably.
CYA.
But it is currently, that's an active septic, it's not abandoned?
That is what I've been led to believe, is that it is active septic. And the sewer, the county sewer connection is abandoned.
I mean, I, I guess for the, for our department, under what circumstances would we want to make sure that we are in fact connecting to public sanitary as part of a project? Just curious. It's a bit unusual to have an active septic commercial property right in the middle of public municipal service.
Yeah, I, I think we'll have to... Yeah, I, I think we'll have to check with, with codes, but I think we have other, we have some other septic, don't we Doug, in, into where?
To be. Yeah, and anything to septic sewer if you can.
Uh, so yes, but also we're a small business, so this is, this is the single largest investment that we've looked at. Uh, I know that you guys want granite curbs. There's a pretty good cause to putting in granite curbs, so ease of life, absolutely. I would rather be hooked up to county. But if the septic's currently working, I don't wanna put money into something that's working.
What is our, when they, when we do codes, it is, are they required to show the septic is working for? I mean, can, they, they can't get a certificate.
They can't get, right, I mean, they can't, you can't get, can't get a certificate of occupancy without it, right?
But they have a working system.
Yeah.
He, I mean, he doesn't know for sure, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I gotta believe, I mean, Sammy Lee was in this building.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the guy was living in it.
And was living in it.
Up, up to two months ago, there was somebody living in it.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure that.
Maybe when you get your real estate agent, you should ask for like a septic report.
Okay, they probably have to do a phase one, right?
Are you getting financing?
No.
Oh, no.
So, no?
So then, then especially if you're doing it as a cash deal, you have a little bit of leverage and you can ask them for a little bit of stuff because otherwise, if it was getting financing, they'd have to do a, a proof anyway.
Right.
Yeah, you could ask for certification, septic system.
Okay.
This is this, the former Syracuse Auto Solutions, is that?
Yeah, so yeah, blue for gray and black, yeah, yeah.
And, and did you, you said you're not going to find anything, so they're not gonna require, not gonna require you to phase ones?
Correct.
Exactly.
Uh, I am not. I saw the reports from.
I mean, it's outside of this, but I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just looking out for it.
No, I, I appreciate it, so.
Yeah, there's some gas pumps that were removed and.
Yeah, do they?
The tanks, tanks were removed in May of nineteen ninety. And there's the, the particular reports and all that from nineteen ninety. Yes.
Because they go with the ownership for the life of the property, right?
You don't wanna buy, have any gas to go in, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Like a gray deal or anything.
Park is a super fun site.
Oh, yeah, right. And if, and if you do, you can ask, ask to get it for a dollar or something.
Uh, yeah, it is very rough right now. There's, the front glass is broken out, the door got cut open because of reasons with the previous tenant. There's a currently stop work order. Uh, season desist orders. And it's just a complete eyesore for us. I think it's a diamond in the rough. We can, I can use my team to build them back up, do some of this landscaping, give some of the work, save some cost there. The location is very nice. You can hop right on six ninety, get anywhere in county and want to manage yourself at work.
Sounds like you're doing a, a force sale by owner almost, and I'm just like in my head thinking like, please make sure you have a lawyer checking.
I do have a lawyer, yes.
It's used to purchasing.
Commercial properties.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, for real, just, it's like Jamie does like this stuff every day, so just make sure you get one that's used to real estate law all the time, which also Jamie does.
What's your, what's the plan for the, for the building itself then, the exterior?
Your finishes and stuff, what do you have planned? How are you gonna clean it up and make it look better, the building?
Uh, replace a broken glass, replace a broken door. Really, that's kinda all we have set for now, in addition to the curving.
And the fence.
The, the fence, the trees, the grass, right, so more.
Fence did you call out? What kind of fence did you call out?
Uh, wooden, I think six foot.
Yeah, just six foot wood privacy fences.
Yes. No, no, I was thinking of doing that type of, I assumed that we'd do a fence detail with the building permit, but the type of fence was.
It'll be with the site plan too, so probably with the next submission.
Okay.
But we wanna see what.
Okay.
Um, and our, the chair who's not here today brought up a point when I was looking at this with him, the site plan should reference what survey it's kind of based off of.
Okay.
That's kind of more a, a comment for Terry, of course, but. I don't know.
How's the lighting on this site at night?
There are two or three lights across the top here. I think there's three, one for each of the garage doors. Um.
Are you adding any lighting?
I wasn't planning on it.
You're gonna get rid of a sign though, right?
You're gonna get, you're gonna put up your own sign?
Yeah, so they, they have a, a banner sign, which I don't know if banners are allowed, okay, um. And then, so I take that down and then replace it with something from, so I, I saw a site like this allows one sign, certain height of letters across the front of the building without special approval of permitting. Also, I'm. We have to get a proper mess, so.
Okay, but you wouldn't. The board generally wants to see what you're gonna put up for signage, um, if it's in for site plan, generally it's good to show the signs, uh, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a building's permit. But then some kind of detail, if it's a box sign, final letters, so, yeah. So be aware of that.
With the fence detail.
That water drop makes your rectangle for your sign, sign quite large.
Correct, it does. So it'll be the, the box around everything, the logo.
Yeah, there's a lot in square.
Right now, it looks like you're adding grass along your side lot also. Cause right now it looks like it's completely paved all the way from like your lot to the lot next door.
That is correct, so there's.
You're gonna ground that up and get rid of it?
Yeah, of, of few things, um, one, to try to make this process as easy as possible. I've looked at the previously approved plan that this board approved and tried to keep the same thought process. Two, right here, this is, it's pavement all the way across with the neighboring property, but there's like a foot and a half elevation difference in uh, no foot space, so it, it's just a drop off. Like you can see the scrape marks where cars have gotten hung up multiple times. So there, there has to be something to divide that, and quite frankly, grass and and a fence is cheaper than a retained wall and having grading.
One of the things we talked about when the last person was here doing the site plan was, um, the driveways and like narrowing the driveways and all that, and you, you're proposing all the same?
Yes.
Okay, um, so you'll need a permit from New York State DOT.
Correct.
Uh, that last point brought up something, if you could better define the extent of the pavement, scroll up a little, like when I was first, oh, so, when I was first looking at this, like the side of the building, it's a little difficult to tell where the pavement, I was being on the left side, but.
The same?
Yeah.
The edge of pavement.
Yeah, the edge of the pavement. Cause we weren't sure if that was paved there or you were parking on grass, so just to kind of show the edge of the pavement.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, th- this is currently all paved. Um, this side is.
Three quarters back, just like that.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't think the angle's quite like that, but there is some pavement.
It's, it's similar to that. Yeah.
Uh, and then this is all, all just completely overgrown scrub brush all the way back through packed full of trash and garbage and intertwined, I think it's, I guess I, I don't know whose fence it is, uh, but there is a fence that runs all across here that's half falling down and collapsed.
Excuse me, Eric, did you have a chance to compare this to the approved plan that we did?
Not exhaustively, uh, it's substantially similar, um, but the other one actually had the pavement going back further, right? Um, cause you brought up the point about the septic vent.
Yeah, so the, just rough, rough ballpark, the previous approved plan, this pavement went further back because it was auto sales, I needed three additional parking spaces. Uh, so that, that was part of it, and then down here.
Super dug on the, um, phone, on the right-hand side of the building, the pavement used to go beyond the building onto the back, but that's where the septic field is now, so they've uh, shortened it up and it only goes like half the depth of the building, the pavement. Okay.
Hmm.
Uh, and that septic field was there all along, but, um, and then in the front of the property, this, the left side, the curve line swallowed up this entire first parking spot.
Hmm.
And then for this, this landscaping came all the way up pretty much in line with that first parking spot, and then same thing with this right, it swallowed up that first parking spot.
And so then Doug.
Were the materials the same? Did, did they have granite curb on the last plan?
Yeah, yes.
And, um.
I don't know where that went.
What were they, what were they doing to the building? Were they painting it? Was it, what was happening to the actual structure?
The building doesn't.
I know, I'm putting you on the spot, Eric.
I don't, I don't think there were any plans for the the actual facade and materials.
Building was painted somewhere between twenty nineteen and now. It used to be like a orange and blue and yellow.
It's now horrible.
Mixture. Now it's gray and black.
So the, the driveway cuts that are coming in, I do recall this from the last application, but are, are they essentially the same here as they were in the previous application? And the last time, there was quite a bit of discussion about trying to line up what DOT did to the site, and I think we had a compromise, so is this different?
The, the actual entrances did not change
Okay.
much or at all. I, it, it's just the.
But the current condition, Doug, they're like super wide, and so he added back in, um, he added back in on both ends to allow for the parking spaces, and then he widened up the center too, because right now it's pretty much the whole front is open to the road except for a little patch in the center.
Right, right, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this left side, which would be the north and, north entrance, the sidewalk curb drop, this, this is actually that curb drop is almost in line with the edge of the property. You can see it from Google Earth. So it's just an awkward thing, what the DOT did and trying to match up with that. Like you said, it, it's not a perfect situation.
Do you know why the last plan failed?
This, I heard hearsay and speculation. They started working the tenant started.
Is there?
Currently it's vacant.
Oh, no, it's not. Okay, there've been a few tenants, okay.
Yeah, so somebody was gonna start and then they didn't, and they expired, and they got an extension on the building plan, and then there were stop work orders, and somebody else was gonna do it, and then they stopped paying that one.
If it was here, people on the board last year. But I don't remember this one.
Yeah, this year.
Last year.
How do I not remember?
Very smart auto sales.
Actually, January nineteen.
Yeah.
Auto sales and service.
February nineteenth was what it's.
And Terry Forrest did that one too. So the curb, for the record, the curb radii at the entrances are the same for both entrances. That middle median was a bit deeper into the site on the previous plan, and like Jeff was saying, on the left side, it the curving went back farther, but you wouldn't be able to have a parking space there.
Right.
Is that enough parking spots? What he has are eight and is eight enough?
He needs seven.
How many employees do you, would you have working in the building? There's a lot out in the field, right?
Group, correct. Uh, right now, we don't have any full-time office people. It's me with that, I bet. Uh, so I, at some point in the next couple of years, I would like to hire an office person who can man follow phone calls and do invoicing and stuff, so it'd be one person working there.
So it's not like the public's coming here to place an order for something?
Correct. I, I could imagine there might be a few people that stop in, everyone's allowed to make a payment, or like we, we've had people come to our house, which is where we currently operate out of, and they walk up to a plain Jane residential house with no signage or anything and say, we found it on Google, can we tell them anything about Irrigation? Right, so I, I can't rule out that somebody's gonna come to the office.
Sure.
Um, but we go to people's houses.
Right.
Cause.
So in the building, you're mostly using it like storage of all your stuffs.
Correct.
Storage in a home base, right? Like the, and every day, the, the cement trucks come back, people get in their personal vehicles and.
Correct. It'd be nice to have a printer, so I don't have to
Sure.
use our printer and they.
Would give you. Presence also.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we were just looking at the septic.
Just make sure the Z engine.
Sure you have a.
Okay. Yeah.
I recommend calling the county.
Okay.
Sure, just having them.
Whenever you guys.
Get a, get a diet after.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, something similar.
Okay.
Just for your own identification.
Right.
And you can also look on the D E C website for any spills.
Okay.
Do you know what it sold for the last time it sold? You know?
I did look it up, yeah.
It's me, get your, look, I'm trying to take care of you.
Oh, it seemed like it would be a good project, that's why, right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so if we don't have any more comments today, I think from this point, we would be headed towards a full code review and comments on the current submission.
Yep, we'll send you comments, you can keep working with Eric, um, when you start looking at your sign stuff. Of signs. If you allow that. Uh, our engineer is online, and I'll take a look at this too and find any comments he has.
Okay.
By board engineer.
And then if you have any questions or you wanna, um, chat with us about like moving things forward, you could schedule a Tuesday morning work session, and that's where we like have the same conversation in the morning, and it's like our, um, work session meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why the other ones.
Those are the workshops.
Yeah, that's why I like everybody goes through so quickly, cause we had a workshop in the morning for them, so.
Um, once you get us your next set of plans to address the comments, then we'll probably put you on from workshop.
Okay.
At that point. I feel like we need to talk about some more stuff.
Yeah, like I, totally aside from this, but I feel like it's backwards, like can, can you guys make a workshop or an open forum so somebody like me can come in without spending the, all the money on a landscape architect and a full submission just to see, like, essentially, I'm trying to figure out, is this viable? I'm not, I don't need approval right now, but is this?
We hear that it's viable, right? So I, I think e- everybody, nobody would vote against this right now, would they? Is any, are, is anybody thinking that?
Use of the general layout.
Yeah.
Like we're into details.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
This is a huge improvement over what's there, so.
Yeah, so we, we would support this as a board. We just have like fine tuning.
Right.
So you wouldn't have to go any further right now, like if you wanted to move in there, it, it fits the business description that it is. You.
Well, well, he can't move in without doing this.
No, no, yeah. No, I'm saying if you want to move forward with the purchase, like you could then move forward with, if you purchased it, you could then take all of these next steps and schedule all of that stuff, but as of right now, what you're showing us and saying that you would wanna do, we would be supporting it and we would just do the fine tuning stuff with you.
Okay.
Yeah, like we're, we don't think he needs double this amount of parking and everything, and yeah, we think that it looks good.
When you're purchase offer, I would still put subject to approval.
Right.
Town board.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, plan board, just to, just to cover yourself.
There's a lot of things you can do in that purchase offer. You have, you're, you have the upper hand, like you're coming in and buying it and it's cash, so they don't have to worry about it falling through or it
Yes, just kidding.
not getting, I don't know if it's like a house, do they have to?
That's it, yeah, it's very different if you're getting.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so you came in cuz you're like, uh, is there anything Blair and right?
Right.
What's gonna put the brakes on that?
Yeah, exactly.
No, I was just, I don't know the rumors of why the other things stopped, like I don't know why there was a stop work order, I don't know why it was canceled, but. If there's somebody that you can dig a little with and find out, you might wanna do that.
Yeah, I, I have a.
I'm saying, you know.
Yeah.
I, I am very confident that it was all people driven and people not bailing.
And people like that sometimes have like bad money on their buildings, so just make sure.
Strength, yeah, there, there is delinquent taxes on that, um.
Of course.
Right.
So yeah, just make sure that there's like no weeds and make sure all that stuff happens, that's what the good real estate lawyer does.
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll title insurance, full title check and search and everything.
Can you send me a digital copy of this?
I can, yeah.
Alright.
So you're getting some good comments.
Okay, yeah, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, I think that we're all done. I'm hoping to close the meeting, Kevin.
Bill.
Bill.
Perfect.
And Bill, when's our next meeting, cuz I missed it. Prior years.
Y'all in favor? Next meeting is.